We're going to call tonight's planning commission meeting to order. No flag salute since this is a Zoom meeting and we have no flag in here with us. And we're going to go to roll call. Before we go to roll call, I'd like to welcome our two newest planning commissioners Chad and Lori. And with that, turn it back to you for a roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Port is excused this evening. Commissioner Garek Kounarowski.
I'm here.
Commissioner Munn. Commissioner Frinovo.
Here.
Commissioner McLean.
Here.
Vice Chair Robertson.
Here.
And Chairman Savage.
Here.
Thank you. Minutes, we have three sets of minutes to approve. Those are May 19th, May 25th, and June 16th of 2021. So we'll do one at a time. Are there any additions or corrections on the May 19th, 2021 meeting minutes? Okay, I'm seeing none, so those minutes stand as submitted. May 25th, 2021, any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those minutes also stand as submitted. And the final minutes are from last month, June 16th, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to those meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, those stand as submitted. And we'll move on to citizen comments. I'm going to check, did anybody sign up tonight to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, no citizens have signed up to speak on these items that wouldn't be on our agenda tonight. So we'll move right over to the first public hearing. This is public hearing file S-21-02. And before we open it, I will turn it over to our city attorney to go over the format for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The procedures have been distributed as part of the agenda and as part of the public notice. We are commencing as a virtual meeting. At the commencement of the hearing, all commissioners should announce any ex parte contact or conflicts of interest. Ex parte contact is contact with anyone outside the meeting or with the property itself regarding a question or issue before the commission. A conflict of interest is when a counselor, commissioner, or a member of the commissioner's family stands to profit from the outcome of the decision. We'll start out with the staff report. The staff report will be presented and it should provide all information that staff believes relevant to the identified criteria from the city's comprehensive plan or land use regulations. We'll then have questions of the staff by commission. I'll then open it up to public testimony. The audience may provide written testimony or oral testimony concerning the issues. Please note, and importantly, failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to their conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues, will preclude any appeal to the land use board of appeals. Sorry, got to scroll down. We'll then open it up to testimony of witnesses. We'll start with the applicant. We'll then have anybody, any opposition to the application and rebuttal if necessary. Commission will then close the public hearing and the discussion will be limited to commission and staff only. Generally, a decision will be made this evening. The decision can be to either approve the application where the commission has found that the criteria have been proven, or deny the application if the commission finds that the applicant has not sustained their burden of proof. The commission may approve an application with conditions for approval which are supported by the facts in the case and the land use plan or regulations. If there aren't any questions, Mr. Chairman, you can open it up and ask for conflicts of interest or ex parte contact.
All right, thank you. Then we will open planning file S-21-02. This is a 10, let's see, what is this? A 10 lot subdivision for a project on the south of Jaden Drive. Amongst the planning commissioners, is there any ex parte contact or conflict of interest regarding this planning file? I would like to note that I do live in this neighborhood. I'm far enough away that I didn't receive the land notice, but I don't believe that that will interfere with my ability to make a decision that's impartial. Just want to note that for the record.
Same then for me. I also live in the neighborhood, but I didn't receive notice. But I don't think that it will impact any of my decision making either.
All right. In that case, we will move forward and we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, sir. As you should see my screen that I'm sharing right now, tonight, we are looking at an application for a subdivision. That subdivision is generally located south of Jaden Drive and east of South Fifth Street. The property is zoned residential mixed density and is within city limits. To the north and east are single-family detached residential homes within the Heather Estates subdivision. And to the west and south are a mix of single-family homes and agricultural uses that are also within the, they're within the county, but designated per the comprehensive plan as residential mixed density. For the site, there is public utilities that are within the vicinity that can be pulled to the site for use. And so the site is able to be developed. This is the subdivision map as proposed. I have put on the map that was provided that shows a buildable lot option so that you can see the context of how the homes would sit. It is supposed to be 10 lots. Those 10 lots are mostly oriented on the south-west portion of the property and then a small lot is located towards the northeast. And this is done largely because, as you can see on the screen with these two blue lines, the area in between here is the BPA easement for utility lines. And that BPA easement indicates that there can be no structures or development in that area outside of, you know, driveways and parking and such. The applicant has had multiple communications with BPA and they have an agreement, from my understanding, that the plan as proposed with the driveway and the street meet the standards for BPA. So at this point, the only thing that would occur under there would be access to the different lots, parking, and then the public street that is proposed. It is a proposed public street. That would be a cul-de-sac that would have one singular entrance off of Jaded Drive that would turn into a public cul-de-sac to service the 10 proposed lots. These 10 proposed lots are somewhere between 3,500 square feet for some of the smaller ones to over 9,000 square feet for the larger options. They have a net lot area that meets the minimum standards to be able to do a town home or a single-family attached product for a large number of units, which is why we're showing this buildable lot map so that you could see the properties which are large enough to be able to do the single-family attached properties versus the two properties that are large enough to do a single-family detached concept. It is of interesting note that the two properties that are large enough to do single-family detached with the adoption of the ordinance associated with House Bill 2001, those properties are eligible to be able to be used as duplexes as well by right per that ordinance that we were required to adopt. So you see the property orientation for access to the properties. There would be reciprocal access easements as we are trying to minimize driveway access onto the cul-de-sac. So you have a total of four driveways that are proposed and these driveways would be shared amongst multiple units. And so those driveways would have access easements that must be maintained for vehicle and emergency access purposes. As I indicated, the street would be a public street and the utilities would connect from Jaden Drive through the cul-de-sac and then laterals would be placed throughout the cul-de-sac. As proposed, the setbacks would be met for Fifth Street and the future Crowfoot as the front and street side setbacks. And so that is a total of 10 and 15 feet requirement. Both the Fifth Street and Crowfoot would provide for a 15-foot setback. And then the rear property lines would be those along Jaden Drive and mostly the BPA easement identifies clear compliance with the 20-foot setback requirement for each of the property lines associated with that. And so by meeting the setbacks and the attached products and the driveways and the parking, this is a demonstration that the project meets the development code. And so that's the project as a whole. We did receive a public comment on the project. The screen identifies the general considerations to request for denial of the project. First and foremost, the request was for the development type to not be a single-family attached product, but to be consistent with the existing neighborhood, to be single-family detached, which would, as indicated in the letter, be a proposal of maybe six units. There was an indication of significant traffic concerns associated with the 10 proposed units. We've taken a look at the traffic as part of this project. The 10 units would generate 73 trips per day with a total of 5.6 peak PM trips, which based off of those trip analysis, it does not warrant or justify a review of a traffic impact analysis as it's indicated to be able to be easily. For accident concerns at the. Continuously maintained in a fashion to where there's no obstruction so that you have clear vision for appropriate maneuverability. There was also objection to the proposed street name. And then there was a request that if the development were to move forward, that the access would only be off of Fifth Street and not Jaden Drive. And so with that, that can conclude my report and I will stop sharing the screen so we can see everybody and answer any questions.
All right, planning commissioners, do you have any questions for the staff?
I have one.
Go ahead, Todd.
So I'm looking at the plot map and maybe I'm just not seeing it right, but I'm looking at the parking situation. Is it required to have, it looks like lot 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10 all have, and lot 1 additional parking, but lot 4 and 7 do not.
Yes. So as indicated in the applicant's narrative, the buildings themselves would all include two-car garages. Those two-car garages would meet the minimum development standards and so any open parking that is shown as a concept on the plan would actually be parking in excess of the minimum requirement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a good question, Kelly, on this. On the back part of the property where it's up against Crowfoot Road, is there a possibility of driveways back there? Someday, is that the reason why we're having the 15-foot setback? And I mean, what do you think the future development of Crowfoot Road will be?
So the development proposal, well, the subdivision proposal before you tonight is to demonstrate the ability to comply with the setback standards. Our development code says for a property that's on a corner lot, the street side standard is 15 feet for one and the front setback is 10 feet for the other. And so they're showing compliance with a 15-foot setback on both Fifth Street and Crowfoot Road. And so the buildings are designed to only have driveway access on the Freedom Place cul-de-sac. You wouldn't be able to design with only a 15-foot setback, you wouldn't be able to design garage entry into that area because you need at least a minimum 20-foot setback for a driveway at that point. And I don't think that we would authorize driveways on Crowfoot Road as it's identified to be an arterial and the code says you need to put access off of the lesser street.
But do we have the authority to tell somebody what to do on county property? I'm kind of looking at like lot 5 and 6. What's to stop those people from just punching a little driveway into Crowfoot Road?
It doesn't exist as it sits today. So it's just right away at this point, you wouldn't, we wouldn't allow that. So if somebody did per se do that, we would have code enforcement visit them. That's not to say that there's never going to be a driveway on that piece of Crowfoot, but that was intended to be the bypass at one point, which the bypass has kind of been taken out of the master plan. But I would envision that being an arterial hooked into Airport Road, Walker Road area at some point. So the less driveways on that, the better, really.
And for this development proposal specifically, our code says that you are to put driveways on the lesser designated street. Freedom Place is identified as a basic local road, whereas Crowfoot Road is identified as a minor arterial. And so the code automatically stipulates that you need to put your driveways there. And so that's where they're being authorized as planned.
Yeah, and another quick question. On this cul-de-sac, is there parking allowed in that cul-de-sac?
It is designed large enough to have parking, but with the fire turnaround, I don't think that there'll be realistically a parking area.
That's exactly what I'm thinking is if the fire truck pulls in here, you know, they need a pretty good turning radius.
Which is what it's designed for, which is also as part of the design process. The applicant and staff discussed that, which is why they're also demonstrating additional parking on individual lots themselves.
Okay. Yeah, there's actually a lot more parking in this cul-de-sac than the one that I live in. There's none, which is on the opposite side of the neighborhood because it's all painted yellow for fire truck turnaround.
Correct.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes, David Dodson is available for the applicant.
All right, then I will open it up for the applicant to speak.
Hey, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Kelly, can I, can you let me share the screen so I can put a couple of slides up?
Yes, we'll have our IT assist with that if possible.
David, I believe you should have permission already. Kelly was able to and you have the same rights level that she did.
Okay.
Want to go to the bottom of the screen where it says share screen?
Yeah, okay. See if that works.
That looks good.
Got it there?
Yep.
Okay. Well, good evening, members of the planning commission and staff. My name is David Dodson. I'm the planning consultant with Willamette Valley Planning. Also online this evening is the developer and home builder, Tim Smith. He's with Big Valley Builders. So if there's any questions related to what he intends to do, he's available to answer questions as well. On the screen here is the same exhibit that Kelly shared with you earlier, which is the proposed subdivision along with the building footprints and proposed additional parking and things like that. Although this property consists of 1.69 acres, the 100-foot wide overhead BPA easement impacts over half the property. So it's a bit of an odd piece to subdivide. We're proposing to install a new street and cul-de-sac almost entirely with the BPA easement and create 10 new lots ranging in size from roughly 3,200 square feet to 9,600 square feet with an average lot size of roughly 5,900 square feet. So these lots are similar in size to the roughly 6,000 square foot lots within the first phase of Heather Estates, which is adjacent to this project. Each dwelling will have a two-car garage and due to the limited area along the cul-de-sac for on-street parking, we're proposing to provide all but two lots with two additional off-street parking spaces. All the new lots will be served with a shared driveway to reduce the number of curb cuts along the street and allowing more space for street trees. So with the BPA restrictions, there are no structures allowed within their easement. So we're only showing paved surfaces, including the new roads, sidewalks, driveways, and surface parking. To ensure fences are not installed beneath the easement, we'll be imposing a deed restriction on all the new lots. The BPA has issued a signed land use agreement for our proposed subdivision and is grateful for our willingness to not allow fences within the easement. So this exhibit shows the proposed utility plans. I just want to touch on this briefly. First off, I know there was one piece of written testimony, mostly in opposition. One of the concerns had to do with visibility and safety with regard to the location of the new cul-de-sac and new street we're proposing. Actually, the location we're proposing is probably the safest. So from a visibility standpoint, on a curve, you're always better off putting a new access point on the outside because then again, vehicles coming from either direction can see the car entering and also vehicles exiting the cul-de-sac can see the vehicles from the left and the right. So on the inside of the curve, it's much more difficult. So stormwater from the new dwellings and the street will be directed into a 10-inch line that outfalls into the adjacent detention pond, which is in this area just to the, I'm not sure which direction it is actually, I don't know, it's west or north. And a new aid and sanitary sewer line will be extended under the new street and cul-de-sac to serve the 10 new lots. An existing 18-inch water main runs along South Fifth Street that could serve lots 1 through 5 along the street. Remaining lots will be served from a new 8-inch water line in the new street and cul-de-sac. And a fire hydrant will be installed at the end of the cul-de-sac here. And that is to provide fire protection, also serve as a blow-off for the annual system cleaning that's necessary. It's kind of a dead-end line. There's also another fire hydrant we're locating adjacent to lot 3 here over off of South Fifth Street. And again, that provides service to these lots in the event of a fire. So that concludes our presentation. Even though this site is constrained with the BPA easement, we feel these new lots will help address needed housing in Lebanon. We hope you're able to approve this request tonight and both Tim and myself will be able to answer any questions.
Thank you. I have one question. As mentioned earlier about the two-car garages on each lot, will there be, will there be a driveway in front of the two-car garage? It has also two spaces for parking? Or is the two-car garage considered the parking spaces and then the additional that are located around the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, it's a good question. Based on the, you know, the configuration, the lots and all, and where the homes will be, essentially how these houses are going to function is the homes along South Fifth Street will have their front doors facing South Fifth Street. So Tim, the developer, and I've worked with him in the past, is from Brownsville, you know, kind of a historic town, and they typically build front porches on the houses that they build. So again, that would be the front porch facade would face onto Fifth Street. Likewise, the homes in front along, you know, the Crowfoot Road easement would also be facing that direction. So the rear of the houses will be where all the garages will be located. But if you look at lot 1 here, you can see there's really no room for parking in front of it. So there'll be a two-car garage where cars can enter and then turn around. Likewise, here on lot 2, 3. So rarely do, would there be much in the way of parking? I mean, someone, if they wanted to, could park a car there, but they're probably going to preclude access to the other two parking spaces. So it makes more sense to probably park in those other two spaces. It'll be part of the development when homes are constructed.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if it's a relevant question to what we're looking at here, but I'm just curious about this.
You know, fire, or Kelly may be able to answer that. I would think especially on Crowfoot Road, since it really isn't a formal street, that those lots that are served off of there, so lots six through 10, would probably be addressed off of Freedom Place. I'm not sure about lots one through five, if that would be addressed off Fifth or Freedom Place. It's really going to be up to the city and the...
How we usually do it, especially in a place where there's different access opportunities, we would work with the fire department and go through our 911 system to make sure that it's appropriate street addressing and how they're going to access it. And they're going to evaluate it and figure out which, if there is a need to have it all on Freedom Place as an address, or if some of them can be facing on Fifth. For fire access purposes, access on either Fifth or Freedom Place provide appropriate access for them to be able to address any emergency needs, but we'll work with them in the addressing process. For mail purposes, again, it goes through the postal service. They will be the one to dictate whether or not the ones facing towards Fifth Street can have their own individual mailboxes, or if it needs to be a pedestal off of Freedom Place for all of them combined. That'll be dictated by the postal service.
Yeah, I was just curious if it would be confusing in an emergency call situation. Maybe Jeremy could answer on that. Do you ever get calls to residents and your, and the addresses kind of confusing?
Yeah, sometimes, but if, you know, the fire department, they get to know their area pretty well, and if they're all addressed, I think they're all going to be addressed off Freedom Place, and they go right in there and they can access any lot they want to from there. And that's where people are moving in and out of their house, like traffic moves in and out of their house anyway. So it just makes sense to have them all addressed off Freedom Place for the fire department perspective. That's my personal opinion, not speaking for the Lebanon Fire Department.
All right, thanks.
I just came up with another question. I'm looking at the driveway outlines here, and I'm picturing the driveways are probably going to be a poured concrete surface, and there's some open areas between the different driveways. What is the plan for those open areas? Is that's going to be, I guess, barked us landscaped area? Is that maintained by the property owner? Is that maintained by the city?
Yes. So essentially, each of those properties have some, you know, yard area to some degree. And so those areas that are not, you know, part of a driveway would be landscaped. There may be some restrictions about, you know, say for example, you know, the height of trees there because of the BPA power easement. But again, the majority of those would be landscaped, and of course, they would need to meet, you know, vision clearance requirements for driveway approaches and things like that. So the vegetation need to be low, close to the street, and then it could be a little bit taller, closer to the homes.
All of the area is private other than Freedom Place.
Yeah.
So we would have no control over maintenance for it. It would be property owner.
And the landscaping surrounding Freedom Place is...
All property owners.
Okay. We would take no responsibility for any of that.
No.
Okay. It's a very unique parcel, and there's some very unique little sections in it.
Yeah, with the BPA easement, you know, that impacts over half the parcel, and then what's left is this weird triangle. So trust me, we went through a number of plan iterations with staff before we finally got to something that seemingly worked and complied with all the standards.
Yep.
And we appreciated staff's input. They were very helpful, and we were able to have an in-person meeting a while back that helped kind of direct us and guide us to the plan you see before you tonight.
Got you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Being done.
David, if you would stop sharing your screen so we can all, there you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Was there anyone who signed up to testify on the applicant tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. So we have no one that sided to speak in favor or in opposition to the application. So we're going to, we're going to close the public testimony portion of the hearing. All further discussion will be limited between the planning commissioners and staff. I would like to note that Kelly earlier summarized a letter of opposition with, she summarized all the concerns that were in that letter. I wanted to be noted that each planning commissioner received that letter. We all had the opportunity to read it in full. That was just where this meeting was summarizing it for us. And we all had the opportunity to read that letter in full and go over each, we've all had the opportunity to go over each one of those concerns. And I think the applicant has done a fairly decent job taking a really difficult parcel and making it work to get a few extra lots out of what they were going to be able to do. And I know some of the concerns were in relation to, you know, having multifamily housing in the neighborhood, because it is a, it is a neighborhood that just at this point has single-family houses. But planning commissioners, we have to realize this is zone residential mixed use, so anything's allowed from a single-family home all the way up to apartment complex. So if you had to choose between, you know, having two, maybe three, single-family homes that were fit in here versus apartment complex, we would all probably say, yeah, we want single-family homes in our neighborhood. But this is, this is a pretty good compromise, I think, for what the potential for this property is, because a developer could easily come in and say, yeah, we're going to put a 70-unit apartment complex in here, and if it meets all the development codes and standards, then we would be obligated to say yes. So this, I'm speaking on my, this is my personal opinion. This seems like a good use for this really odd-shaped section of property. So I think they've done a good job with it, and I think they've met all the development criteria as well. But I'm going to open it up to the other planning commissioners to speak and see what you guys think.
I agree with Jeremy. I think that he just said exactly what I was thinking. And I think the developer has met the criteria and met the requirements to move ahead with it, in my opinion.
Anyone else?
I'll just pipe in. I'm comfortable with the application. I think the developer has done a really unique job, clever job of using what was almost considered unusable. So I'm good with it. Kudos to them for being creative the way that they did to meet needed housing. We certainly need it.
I think the developer has answered the questions of the person that is in opposition to this. The only thing, the only part of the person's letter that I don't quite understand is the proposed name, the name of the street. David, if you could answer for us, how'd you come up with that name? And how do you pick names?
I mean, I know the, I thought the applicant couldn't speak after you guys while you're doing deliberations. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Sorry about that. I couldn't, I couldn't find my mute button at this quick enough.
Would you speak to the name?
The names are chosen by the developers at the whim of the developers based off of what they think is appropriate for their project and what they're trying to accomplish. And it is processed through the countywide 911 street naming system to make sure that it's an eligible and appropriate name. And if it is, then the city does not make a judgment as to the name and how it fits within the character of any other street names surrounding it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions, comments? Do all the other commissioners feel that this meets the standards, outlaying the development criteria? I'm seeing heads nod.
Yes.
Okay. And it sounds like we're all on the same page here, and I would, I would either take a motion if someone would make one.
I'll make it. I remember that the planning commission approved the proposed subdivision application F-21-02 for the 10-lot subdivision, adopting the written findings contained in the staff report with the conditions of development, and direct staff to draft an order of decision incorporating the findings and conditions of approval.
Second?
Who is that, your second?
Don.
Don. Oh, thanks, Don. Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all. Sure appreciate and love the efficiency of what, how you guys operate out there in Lebanon. I live in Corvallis, and it's a whole different game.
I bet. All right, that's the last of the public hearing, so commission business and comments.
So welcome to our new commissioners. We're happy to have you, and we are almost on a full slate of commissioners now. We do have two more slots open and available to take it up to the full nine-seat opportunity. Both slots that are available are either in city limits or within the urban growth boundary. We do have one person that submitted an application today, so I'll be forwarding that on to the chair and the vice chair for review, and we can set up an interview at a later date for that as well. We will have a meeting in August. It will be in person so long as the travel station is complete and ready to go by then, which we are anticipating. We'll have two applications that will be presented. One is an annexation, another one is a comprehensive plan map amendment. And then we will also have a discussion on the fueling station code considerations of how we might be able to mitigate those uses next to residential zones or within other parts of the city. And then we will also have the inaugural start to the planning commissioner training, which will be put on by our wonderful city attorneys, who will be talking about conflict of interest, bias, and what's considered a meeting and a quorum, and how we are to conduct ourselves professionally in this manner.
And that's August we're starting.
That's August that we will be starting. And so it'll be a full plate, so it'll be a little longer than the meeting tonight, but we'll get through it. So I think with that, I don't have any other reports.
There's no big, no big news. Big things come in Lebanon.
I mean, two new planning commissioners, that's big news.
That's big news. Okay, well, I guess that's all we got. Does anyone else have anything?
Just a quick question. What's the update on the West Side Interceptor?
Start date?
Start construction in mid, yep, start construction in mid-September. That was due to pipe being 12 weeks out to get delivered.
It's probably extra expensive right now, too, isn't it?
It jumped in two months for the project, $300,000. So we jumped on it and didn't really work amendment, but yeah, it's going to go.
The West Side Interceptor is a brilliant sewer line, yeah.
Steel, I believe.
Ah, we're using PVC.
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 That reminds me, so with this, this development is kind of in a weird spot, I mean, multiple weird spots, but the way it's serviceable by sewer is down Jaden, I presume?
Mm-hmm.
And it's getting its water from South Fifth?
It can. You can run services off of South Fifth. They are also going to run a water line into that, onto the cul-de-sac, so they can service it there as well.
So are you, are you familiar with the property to the north of this? It's a long, narrow strip.
Yep.
It was actually approved for a subdivision like years ago.
Uh-huh.
But my understanding is it's not serviceable, and it isn't going to be developed until the West Side Interceptor is out there. And why is this, why is, I guess, the whole Heather Estates neighborhood serviceable and the one right next to it not?
Arbitrary. Drew a line in the sand. Basically said, basically anything south of Bond that's not already included in that sewer service. So this would, this would extend more service up there on that piece that you're talking about. So we just basically held off on that and said...
Is it due to volume? Like, okay.
It's strictly due to flow because it all runs up South Main. So once we connect back into Crowfoot and South Main and run up South Main to Joy Street and take all the Joy Street and Jadeon and all that sewage back around the other way, then we'll build capacity into that line that goes to the north, and we should be good.
I see.
What is the wastewater treatment facility capabilities?
It's capable, it's up, we've got some areas of concern. We're going through a master plan right now, update. I think probably the biggest thing right now is our solid handling, dealing with solid liquid capacity. We found out this year after taking it over that we've got more liquid capacity and ability to treat than what the plant's rated for, so...
So how much liquid capacity are you using up right now?
Well, like right now, we're seeing about a million to 2 million gallons a day, but we can see peaks. Last year before we had to go to storm screens, I think, are 14 million gallons a day.
So you've got a lot of capacity left.
Yeah, so you, there, you can see those peaks, but the plant's rated, you know, I think for a total of 18, but it's growing.
Let's build more houses.
Yeah.
All right, if there's anything else, then we will call this meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
You.
Bye, guys.